Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Those that are here, we are here for our 4:40 council remarks session. Madam Park, would you lead the role, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Marcy?
Here.
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Mr. Hurt?
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
First, the agenda is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here today to discuss the animal control budget and just kind of an update on how animal control has done since we took this over in July. We are actually here at the request of Mr. Schmidt, which was a good idea to just go over the budget. So Sandy is going to present to us how we're looking on the budget and other stuff. Sandy, it's all yours.
I think the microphone.
Yeah, talk as close to it as you can, Sandy, please.
Okay, is that better?
Uh, not really. Maybe we can turn it up a little bit for you? Okay.
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay.
Thanks.
As of 6:30 July 1st, the city took over all animal control operations. We started with Maria and myself operating out of the building located at Waste Management. We have worked diligently and have come a long way and accomplished a lot in ten months. We know the problem areas of the city, we know the dogs, we know the owners. The city as a whole should be very satisfied with the service we provide. The animal control staff consists of one full-time officer, two part-time officers, a part-time kennel cleaner, Maria and myself. Twenty volunteers have stepped forward and offered their services in cleaning kennels, cat housings, exercising and working with dogs, spending time with the cats, doing laundry at their own expense at times, transporting animals to vet appointments and to rescues, shelters and foster homes. We appreciate all their dedication. Many items have been donated to us, including carrying crates, food, chain-link fencing, outside kennels, pet beds, blankets, towels, cleaning supplies, collars, leashes and money, et cetera. The state has inspected our buildings three times each and have passed each time. The most recent inspection was last Tuesday after someone contacted the Department of Agriculture and Animal Welfare Department questioning why the former Central Garage building passed inspection. The inspector who had passed it, along with another inspector at the time, in February, was upset that her work was being questioned by someone from the city. Her comments were that whoever filed the complaint did not know the state code that is followed by all inspections. Again, the building passed. We are not the Humane Society, and if you toured their older building last Thursday, you saw where the Humane Society in animal control operations operated for many, many years until they got their new building. Comments were made, and rumors also that we heard, that I have spent money on purchases under the table. I have worked for the city for over forty years. I take my job very seriously and my position very seriously and take these comments personally. I hope by looking over the animal control budget, you will see where no costs, expenses have been hidden. We have had startup costs in any business or service does. Our budget is as follows. The animal control's fiscal year fourteen adopted budget is $225,327. Year-to-date, we have spent $92,759.94. This includes personal services, contractual services and commodities. However, please note that the contractual services includes the $14,118.50 paid to the Humane Society for last June services. Animal Control's fiscal year adoptive budget for revenues is $21,750. Year-to-date received is $25,701.29. We are also in the process of writing grants for various needs and expenses. We have shown over the last ten months that we provide a professional, extensive service to citizens of Waterloo. We have had many grateful pet owners redeem their pets. We plan to expand our services in the future and possibly adopt. As some council members have voiced our support, it would be very helpful to have the animal controls, it would be very helpful to the animal control staff to have full support rather than a few follow comments and ill advice from outsiders. Come to the source if you have questions or comments. Some of you have said you receive calls, questions and comments from the public or Pass them on to us, as you do for traffic problems, streetlights out, signs down, et cetera. Our records are open and our building can be opened when we are available. We are an impound operation and our building is locked and secured. Maria and I have never been asked if we could use additional volunteers by city people. Only a few council members have asked what we do in our daily operation and have donated blankets, towels, carrying crates, et cetera. No one is asked to ride with our officers to see exactly what we do out on the street and in the buildings. So I do not understand why a very small number of so, are so critical of our operations. We will not fail. There's a small minority that does not agree with animal control being part of the city, but it is. It only makes sense as a city leader to support a city department, not tear it down publicly. So if you would look at our work session part, our mission statement is to provide quality service to the citizens through education, enforcement and leadership, to promote responsible pet ownership and to provide temporary shelter and care for stray and homeless animals while maintaining a vigorous relocation program, including vaccinations and mandatory spay On the next page is our budget worksheet where you can see where our revenues, our license, our permits, our charges for service, our miscellaneous revenues, our district court fines. As you see, we have $1,000 in district court fines. We do not receive those, those go into the general fund budget. My goal is to get those back into our budget to help actually pay for our services. They are written usually as hundred-dollar minimum fines. As of April 14th, they've gone up to $200 minimum. If you take a hundred dollars times 628, that's a lot of money that we could be bringing back into our department. But however, right now, we don't see that. Also, if you go into expenses, there's our salaries and benefits, our contractual services and our commodities. We are all under budget. Revenues have exceeded revenue projections. Operational expenses are at 57% of our budget with 83% of the fiscal year complete. Included in these operational expenses are all of the startup costs for animal control program, including cleaning, painting, ceiling of floors, proper circulation fans, kennels, all required to comply with state code for licensing and permitting. Utilities for this site have been paid from the budget effective March 1st, 2014, as the permit to occupy was granted on February 13th. Capital funds, which were projected for use in the 2008 bond sale for facility upgrades to the former Central Garage, in the amount of $4,382, were used to purchase cat housings or condos for the building, again required to meet permitting requirements. Animal Control has provided a former maintenance van to serve in the patrol response and pickup vehicle. All fuel and maintenance costs associated with its operation are included in the operational expenses listed above. Animal Control has relied upon and is grateful for the support of volunteers who have worked tirelessly to make this transaction a success. The citizens of Waterloo continue to show their support of the program through donations and there's no reason to believe this will not continue in the future. The next page is our, printout of our budget as of the end of April. All of our line items are listed there as to what we have spent. So you can go through that, they all add up to what I just read. I have a chart that kind of shows, sometimes it's easier to see on a chart where we are money-wise. You can see our revenues are above what, what we have projected. The second sheet, that's with no citations. The second sheet shows if we would have our citation money from the district court fines would really raise our revenues. The third sheet is our fiscal year budget to date, showing what we have spent and what is left. Our next sheet is our calls for service. We have had 710 calls for dogs, which mean talk with owner, dog in distress, dogs at large, walking without a leash, dogs in cars. We've had 119 cat calls where we talk with the owner, cars, cats that are stuck under cars, stuck in a sewer, stuck in a tree, cats at large. We answer all these calls. Our calls for wildlife service, we've had 141 calls for wildlife. This also includes chicken, chickens, rabbits, birds and the alligator we had. We have picked up 28 dead deer. I do not, I don't have the total for our raccoons, possums, skunk and that, but I can get that if you need it. Right now, we have three dogs in foster and five cats in foster. We have transferred out 179 dogs, 247 cats and 16 other, which would be the birds and the rabbits, to rescues or other organizations. We have had 238 redemptions, which is where people come and redeem their cats and dogs after we've picked them up. For lost dog reports, we've had 155, we have found 49. We have 69 cat reports of lost cats, we have found 48, and we have found nine other animals. We have euthanized since last July nine dogs and 13 cats. That does not include the two dogs that were shot on sight. We have had too many animals, we have answered 21 calls, we have nine pending cases on that and we have handled 95 bite cases. We have issued 628 citations, we have 12 pending at this time. We have written 790 written warnings. These include city license and rabies, cruelty, then we also issue license and rabies, unsanitary conditions, which we also issue license and rabies, barking complaints, where we also issue license and rabies, and owner allows, which is they allow their dogs or cats to run loose. And we also issue rabies and license to that. As of the end of April, last year, we licensed 339 cats and 2,193 dogs for the whole year of 2013. As of the end of April, we have issued 362 cat licenses, so we're ahead on that. And we have issued 2,205 dog license, which we're ahead on that, and we still have eight, seven months to go, eight months to go. So, that's all I have to report. I also would like you to know that we have four veterinarians that we deal with that give us discount rates. There are Positive Pet Care in Waterloo, Iowa Humane Alliance in Cedar Rapids, Cedar Valley Vet Center in Cedar Falls, and Advanced Pet Care Clinic in Cedar Falls. The cleaners and everything we use to clean and sanitize our kennels are biodegradable. We are very green. Our dogs are, our dog kennels and our cat housings are cleaned every morning and sanitized. They are also cleaned in the afternoon and dogs are let out every evening between 9:00 and 10:30. We are now microchipping every animal that is redeemed and the owner signed a mandatory spay-neuter paper, so, and we do follow up on that. So if they do not spay and neuter their animals, we have the right to take them or find them for that. So, do we have any questions? I know I ran through a lot really quick.
Sandy, thank you very much. Very good. Mr. Jones, it is time for council questions.
Excellent. How many animals do we have in care under our two facilities today?
Right now? Let's see, we were just down there today. I believe there's eight cats, nine cats. And there's 15 dogs? 15 dogs. We picked up six last night.
Are weekends usually busier at Sandy? I mean, you'll have more on D than the rest of the week normally, or is that not necessarily?
Um, it just runs in, no, there's no one day that's busier than another usually.
Okay, very good. Mr. Jones?
So of, of the animals, the eight cats and 15 dogs that we have, what is their average stay in that facility before they're moved somewhere else?
Okay, if they are not licensed, or we also scan our animals to see if, if they have identification. We can move them after three days. We try, sometimes we end up having them a little bit longer than that. If they have identification, we're required to keep them five days and we try to contact the owners to see if they'll come and get them. There are a lot of times owners don't come back, they don't come and get their dogs because it's easier to go out on the street corner and get another one.
Mr. Schmidt?
Just have two questions. Number one, what do we do with our deceased animals?
We have, it's a DNR-approved compost down in Waste Management Facility that is, it's approved by the DNR. That's where we, we bury our animals and then it's churned over, just like a compost pile. And they disintegrate and...
And then could, could we get a copy of your opening statement?
Sure.
So I can refer to that?
Yep.
Thank you. Until then.
Very good. Counsel, any further questions? Mr. Mayor?
Sandy, how many people are working for your, this unit? How many, how many staff do we have?
Okay, we have one full-time officer, two part-time officers, a part-time kennel cleaner and Maria and myself.
So we have one point, we have two and a half people working.
Right.
I thought the budget was for 1.5.
And we, we have added, but they're just part-time, so there's no benefits or anything And we went through the prereq meeting and everything on that.
I don't, I just don't understand how you can, how we can run this with the volume of dogs and cats that are out there. The Humane Society tells us that they were picking up 3,500 animals a year, or touching 3,500 animals.
We answer every call we have, you know, every call we get, we have. We don't always bring the animals in. We know where a lot of animals live, we know where a lot of dogs live, so we can take them back home and then we issue warnings or, and/or citations. So we don't always bring the animals in.
We're just holding the animals, aren't we? We're not...
Right.
We're just boarding them for a little while, aren't we?
Right.
Then they go to rescues or where do they go?
Or fosters or shelters, yes.
And what do they do with them? Adopt them? Do you plan on staying in that building very long?
That's our, that's our goal, is to stay in that building. Unless somebody would donate a million dollars to us, but...
I don't know what to say.
Well, is there a question in there somewhere, Tom? I mean, because that's kind of the point here, and...
I just don't understand, maybe I'm stupid, but I look at this facility that the animal control out there has and I look at our facility, it's no garage, and I don't see how we're going to do what they were doing for us.
And, and we're not trying to and we don't want to do that at all.
We're just going to do enforcement and...
We do enforcement and, and, you know, we hold animals and then we turn them over. And as Sandy said, it's, it's a locked, secured facility. We don't, the public doesn't come and go, we're not an adoption facility. We, we don't intend on ever being a Humane Society. So, and I think that the, the proof is in the pudding where we keep getting inspected and we keep passing that. And I guess I would like to make a comment about the budget, if I may, that, that in 2014, the year that we're in now, the budget was $225,327, as is shown on your animal control budget worksheet. To date, we have only spent 57% of that, only $92,759. For 2015 budget, that budget is $244,579, which was approved by council. Sandy can't spend more than that without coming to the council. She can't spend more than a thousand dollars at a time without getting a pre-odd from council. And she has done just an incredible job at maintaining the program to date with what she started with. And, you know, she kind of touched on it, but I, I think we should just be falling all over ourselves trying to compliment Sandy and Maria and that staff as to what a great job they've done with the budget that they have spent so far. And again, you know, the, the animal control budget starting July 1st is up a little bit from the 14 budget, but it was the budget she asked for. I don't know, it's not, we've reduced it some, but it was approved by council. So she can't spend more than that. When you're concerned about the animal control budget, I, I don't think you should be. You know, it's, it's right there. That's what it is and that's what she has to spend and I'm quite confident she'll do a great job in running the program that we have with that dollars. It won't be a Humane Society program, Tom, and it's not intended to be. Mr. Walper, you had a question?
First of all, Sandy, I want to thank you and Maria and your staff for what you're doing. I really appreciate all the animals that you're saving. When the citizens donate to the cause, do you prefer money versus buying dog food, cat food, blankets, that type of thing?
You know, um...
You can generally buy stuff cheaper probably than what we can?
Actually, we'll take anything. I mean, whatever they want to. And if they would request, we also have forms that are for donations that they can use on their taxes. You know, if they request that, we fill those out for them.
Okay.
So anything is appreciated.
Can you buy stuff cheaper than say if I go to the store and buy a mega dog food? Can you buy dog food cheaper?
At times, we're, we're looking at programs for that right now. However, we don't want to be caught in purchasing one brand of dog food and that's what some of them are and we won't do that because then you're supporting only that, that brand and we can't do that, so...
Okay.
Sandy? I'm sorry, Mr. Marcy?
I just wanted to commend you and Maria and volunteers and the part-time people for what you've done. I know I wasn't here last year for the vote, but what I saw, I was impressed. I hope you keep it up. Don't get down about anything, just keep going. And I think it's one of those issues that we as a council can look at fulfilling one of those priorities that we had and that is to present a positive image of Waterloo. And I think what you're doing and Maria's doing and the whole staff and volunteers are doing is doing exactly that. So thank you very much. One thing I would like to know is if people wanted to be a foster person for a cat or a dog, or if they wanted to get into having a dog or getting one of these dogs, I mean, they're, they're all cute and all get out when I saw them, but how would people go about getting that info because I, I have no idea how you become a foster parent for a dog or a cat or...
The best thing to do would be to contact us and we will work with the people.
Is that well-known though, Sandy? Maria?
Maybe not so much, but, but everything is on Angels for Animals, the website that is run by volunteers, it's not run by city people. And all of our dogs and cats pictures are on there daily, whenever they come in, we make sure that gets posted. So there's a lot of information on that website also.
Good. Mr. Schmidt?
Schmidt. Couple things, you know, number one, Sandy, I hope that the questions that have been raised, that nobody took in personally, people are just asking questions. I think that's part of the city council's job, is to ask questions and to help oversee things, otherwise I'm not quite sure why we'd be here. So if you took anything personally, I'm sorry that you did and I certainly didn't mean it that way. Going back to the comparison between the two organizations, for those of us that took the time to go out and look at both, our, our previous facility that we've been using for the last 10 months, and I didn't take my tape measure long, but I'm guessing it's about a 12-by-24 building. It's on the far back side of the Waste Management. We actually had to look for a little while to find it. And so that's where our animals have been residing for the last 12 or 10 months. And in that building, if I'm correct, we've had dogs and cats. And I'm not a animal psychologist, but I believe cats are extremely traumatized by being in the same room with dogs. And so I think that that's what's been going on for the last 10 months. And while I certainly commend all the volunteers that have worked on this and all the city staff that have worked on it, when you go out to the Humane Society, and, and I'm not talking about the adoption facility, which is the newer, bigger building, the 1.3 million dollar building that was built, I'm talking about the other buildings they have out there are far larger than that. They're divided up, dogs and cats, they're divided up so that you can clean the animals, they've got drains, they've got pans, they've got laundry facilities. It was a building that was built for animal control. And I think the building we've been using, I don't know what it was built for, but it's some kind of a shed or garage or something. So as far as the, the welfare of the animals, which I think has been a high priority for a lot of us, I don't see how we can say the last 10 months, we have provided a better product than what the Cedar Bend Humane Society has provided. I just, I defy anybody to, to show us that if you look at the two different facilities. And I'm not talking about an adoption part of it, I'm just talking about the animal intake part of it. It's, it's night and day difference. As far as public safety goes, I don't remember what the public safety issue was prior to the city taking over animal control, but I know what it's been since the city has taken over animal control and it's been devastating. We've become the pit bull capital of the Midwest. And while I certainly would not blame Maria Tiller or you for that, what it might have to do with is the fact that we've gone from two and a half employees, the Humane Society told us they had 30. Now, I don't know how many of that 30 have to do with animal control, but I mean, we're just, we're not comparing apples to apples, which I think has been some of our contention or question all along. And then the third item having to do with the budget, I don't know that we've had a chance to really look at the budget lately, but, you know, the original budget was proposed that we were going to save $20,000. I think, Mr. Mayor, a month ago, you said, I think, I think it was a month ago, you said, "Well, we aren't going to, we aren't going to save the $20,000, but we're going to break even." So that's where the budget question came from. So again, I think that's why I and some other council members had questions about this, wanted to take a look at it. And then ultimately, there's this inference that the Central Garage is going to become the new animal control building. And I don't ever remember voting for that. I don't think any other council member remembers voting for that. And so now let's compare the Central Garage to the Humane Society intake building. And again, it, it doesn't fare favorably. That building was built as a central garage, it was built to service vehicles, there are virtually no windows, those animals are in the dark all day long, the parking lot is in asphalt... The parking lot is an asphalt parking lot at the Humane Society, they have paths they can walk, the animals, they've got all kinds of outside pens, inside pens. Again, it was built to deal with animals, and the central garage was built to deal with vehicles. I mean, we're just, we're not comparing apples to apples, and that's my frustration, I'm sorry.
I tell you what, we're out of time.
I just wanted to say, just a couple of quick comments.
Quickly, if you would, please.
Just, first of all, I was originally not in support of the transition, that was 10, 12 months ago. But thank you for the tour earlier today, it gave us an opportunity to kind of see for ourselves exactly what's taking place. And I want to compliment you on the progress that has been made. It's been tough times, a lot of questions, which, as we say, I guess it's our responsibility to do that. But I want to thank you and Maria for the progress that you've made over the last several months. And I know we are supposedly an in-pound facility. I don't expect, within the first 10 months, for us to look like a $2 million or a $3 million facility that's currently being compared to. But thank you for the progress, and you have my support on making this work. I think the people want to see this work as well, so you have my support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're out of time, ladies and gentlemen, but, you know, I'm going to make a closing statement, if I may, please, that we have got to move on with animal control. We can't every month, or two months, or six months, or whatever, keep having this discussion. It is causing a great deal of personal turmoil to our staff. So, we've got to move on. We've got to get past our animal control issue and move forward with what I think is an excellent product. Mr. Schmidt, I would make a suggestion. You can do with what you want, that if you're unhappy with our animal control being city-owned, city-run, that you should, at some point, make a motion, try to get a second, that we go back to the Humane Society. If that motion is made and passed, we'll go back to the Humane Society. If it doesn't, let's move forward and be positive about this, instead of continually raising questions and questions and questions. And while you may not intend it, it's certainly perceived as ridicule, and it's being taken very personal, and it's having a lot of effect on folks, so, volunteers and staff included. So, anyway. Yes, Ms. Cole?
The council voted to bring animal control back under the city umbrella. And the reason we did was that costs were escalating, ordinances were not being enforced, and we were getting really lousy customer service. When the Humane Society lost its Waterloo contract, they turned around and re-elected their board president. Now, both Cedar Falls and the county, and nothing in government happens quickly, as we know, it takes three weeks to get a parking ticket ordinance passed, want us to assume their animal control operations. So it's the Humane Society that should be asking itself what they did to lose three major accounts and take a look at their senior management. And lastly, I am really sick and tired of the, what I'm calling the municipal version of McCarthyism that has pervaded these meetings, and it must end, implying that a city department head is doing something under the table, assaults her integrity, and this pattern has gone on for months. And I have the emails, so I would ask that we move ahead.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
First, we're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those items pass.
I will take the new business. First, we have Tim Mandera, Associate Planner, and Adrian Wolker, Associate Planner for the Basic Argus Training Workshop, Cedar Falls, Iowa, May 14th, 15th, that'll cost not to exceed $454. Next, we have Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer, Ryan Shitek, Engineer Tech, Phil Schupert, Stormwater Specialist, and Ben Wagner, spokesperson for the same training at Cedar Falls, May 14th, 15th, costs not to exceed $908. Next, we have Craig Hinsman, Signal Tech, H. Brandon Hodgson, Signal Tech, Jeremiah Luck, Equipment Operator, and Scott Krosick, Equipment Operator, to the same training, May 14th and 15th, $788 amended from April 20th, 14. Mark Brand, the Sea Mom Specialist, and Laura Wolf, Clerk 1, Basic Argus Training Workshop, Cedar Falls, May 14th, 15th, $395 amended from 4/28. Investigator Hesse and Officer Stratton, Protecting Our Children, Train the Trainer, Ames, Iowa, May 19th through the 20th, that'll cost not to exceed $295. And item number six is approval to dispose the following vehicles via sealed bid, a 2003 Chevy Minivan, 2003 Chevy Malibu, a 98 Ford F-50, 2003 Ford Ranger, 2009 Ford Ranger that was totaled, 2009 Ford Crown Victoria, 2009, another Crown Victoria, another 2009 Crown Victoria, two more 2009 Crown Victorias. I make a motion, we approve all those items.
I have a question. The first two trial requests, the first four, because they're all attending the same class, and the first two departments are asking for lunch, that meeting's at you and I, lunch is not being provided, so I don't know if they'd see the department, if they go home to lunch, that would be if they were at their office, and we're not treating all the departments equitably. So I, I don't think we want, do you want them to be equitable, or approve them as they were submitted?
I'm all about equity. So the other ones do not, you're saying?
Correct. One and two are requesting funds for lunch drinks, or are not.
I would recommend the first two, don't get it either. Do we have a second? Do I need a second? You two, I mean, I mean, it seems like...
I would say...
That's the way they all are, right?
Both at heart and ease.
Yeah.
They can eat on campus, too.
Oh, yeah. So, how do we do that?
I think you just approve them with no lunch authorization, I can take it from there.
Just have one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you make a motion to do it that way?
Yeah, without.
Without?
Right.
So you want to amend your motion?
Yes.
And...
I do.
Without?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, got through that.
You're up, then.
You got a list?
Save the best for last.
I've got the list. Yes, pretty good. And number seven.
Read quickly.
Yes, sir. Number seven, building maintenance, the amount of $5,561.26 for the purchase of chairs for city council chambers, remodel, building maintenance, and the amount of $8,000 for purchase of startup pool chemicals for burns and gates pools, buildings and maintenance, $3,500 for labor, and this will be as items to replace two compressors on the multi-stack chiller at Five Sullivan Brothers. City will provide compressors and refrigerants. Central garage, the amount of $5,625 for rebuilt motor for track number 151007. Engineering, the amount of $4,250 replacement hole and fixture, along with all needed labor and materials per project specifications. Leisure services, the amount of $7,850.60, removal of deteriorizing limestone rock wall adjacent to Gates Pool, pro shop, interplace with new block retaining wall. Leisure services, the amount of $2,160, annual flower could be planted in 24 of the saucer style planters at Riverlooke Expo Plaza. Leisure services, the amount of $4,831, three sets of new style tree grates installed and around Riverlooke Plaza area. Leisure services, the amount of $4,104, installation of a retaining wall near the intersection of West Third and 218 Access Road. Leisure services, the amount of $8,000. Chemicals and fertilizers for turf management at City Parks right away, and bald diamonds sanitation, the amount of $22,581, plus $2,400 shipping and handling for 35, 65, and 95 gallon garbage carts. Streets, the amount of $23,760 for crack sealer, sealant, traffic operations, the amount of $5,425 for two decorative lighting, light poles and fixtures. Traffic operations, the amount of $1,150.52 for 25-foot street light pole, the 15-foot arm. Traffic operations, the amount of $7,665 for loop and autoscope camera, auto scope camera and hardware. Traffic operations, the amount of $2,730 for flush mount wireless sensors and epoxy tube. Traffic operations, the amount of $3,629.20 for 40 sets of anchor bolts. Waste management, the amount of $5,209 for two SCBA units with air masks, carrying harness, air cylinder, and one space air cylinder. Waste management, the amount of $10,771 for replacement pump at Cattle Congress stand, Cattle Congress Senatorial Lift Station. Waste management, the amount of $16,575.66 for Power Edge R820, catalog number EN1089, WMS computer server.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
I would vote aye on everything except item number one, I'd vote no on the chairs for the council chambers.
Okay. Do you have that? Okay. Those items pass. I move that we approve the project budgets, number eight and nine, and that we approve the budget line item amendments for 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are $2,570,029.17. We have a motion, a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Well, good. The motion's carry. Next three, please. Nine, or excuse me, ten, eleven, twelve.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number ten, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the proposed minor plot of eight point three seven acres into two-lit zone A dash one agricultural district located at one thirty-five East Shawless Highway and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item number eleven is adopting a resolution approving a real estate purchase agreement with Locust Partnership for the acquisition and purchase of partial eight nine one three dash two six dash two zero, two zero five dash zero zero seven located near the intersection of West Second and Jefferson Streets in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item number twelve is adopting a resolution to approve and accept certain acquisition contracts and certain deeds to sell real property to the City of Waterloo for the partial acquisition of right of way and temporary easement to allow for roadway improvements to Kimball Avenue between Tower Park Drive and Acadia Street. I dot number S T P dash U dash eight one five five seven three one dash seven zero dash zero seven.
Second.
Very good. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Mr. Schmidt, you, and item number ten, Madam Clerk, Mr. Schmidt read Shawless. I have on my agenda Airline. Should it be Airline or is it Shawless?
I'm sorry if I said Shawless. That's Airline.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry if I'm sp-.
One thirty-five. Okay, it's one thirty-five East Airline Highway is the correct address. Questions or comments on ten, eleven, or twelve? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Let's do the next three, please. Thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Thirteen is a resolution approving a minor site plan amendment to the request of a C-one, C-Z conditional zoning district to allow, to allow for the removal of the existing McDonald's restaurant and allow for a new five thousand two hundred and thirty-five square foot McDonald's restaurant to be built in its place. Fourteen is a resolution approving an agreement of the amount of fourteen hundred dollars per month for the first, first, after the first three months with gym, CrossFit, Kilo, four Kilo trained activities in the existing shelf space and allow for the sports black members to participate for a period of May first, twenty fourteen through April thirtieth, twenty fifteen and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Fifteen is a resolution approving the recommendation of award of bid to Zo Medical Corporation for the purchase of seven twelve lead cardiac monitors in the amount of not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Welper. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. Items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a resolution approving twenty-eighty agreements with the City of Waterloo and the following communities Grundy Center and Allison and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number seventeen, to make a resolution approving notice of intent for N P D E S coverage under general permit to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in conjunction with fiscal year two, twenty fourteen storm water lift stations parentheses Hollywood Cedar Bend Fletcher parentheses contract number eight three six and authorize mayor to execute said document. And resolution setting date of hearing as May twelfth, two thousand fourteen to approve plans and specifications in conjunction with fiscal year twenty fourteen Kimball Avenue Transportation Improvement Project contract number eight forty-three and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three, sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen? Madam Clerk, roll call votes, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. Very good. Those are the motions carry. Item nineteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive file considering pass for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand and seven Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by striking in its entirety Article B, construction site erosion and sediment control of Chapter Four Stormwater Management Program of Title Eight Public Utilities and by substituting thereof a new Article B. Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding item number nineteen?
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, we got, I believe, some of us got an email today from a fellow out on Teton. I think you were copying on that. Would we have Mr. Schupert address that? Do we have a copy of that with us?
I'm not sure. Is that, uh, regarding the rubble site out there, Mr. Schmidt?
No, no, Teton. I think it was Teton, south of town. I thought it came to you, I, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Lynn. So I thought... You didn't get copied on it? Okay. Well, I guess you can't refer to it then.
No, I don't think, if I did, I don't remember it.
Okay. Well, maybe we should just have a little overview while I find that in my email.
I don't think Mr. Schupert is here, but maybe you...
He is.
Oh, you are back there, Phil. Would you just kind of give us an overview of what we're doing here, please?
I did not get...
Uh, just, just tell us what your, your request, generally speaking, is. You're amending the Code of Ordinances regarding the storm water permits. Just give us a thirty thousand feet overview of what you're doing, would you please?
Yeah, essentially, we are amending our existing construction site erosion and sediment control ordinance to bring it into compliance with current state permits and establishing a permitting system for tracking construction sites for the city.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Phil? Very good. Thanks, Phil. Can we proceed, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, you bet.
Phone favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion. The first one is?
Yes.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Uh, no. Thank you. It's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. We will...
We got another vote.
We will take this up next week. The motion to suspend the rules does not pass. We're going to go to other council business. I, I think we can take, let's do twenty and twenty-two together, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
I move to receive and place on file the twenty thirteen operating report of the Waterloo Water Works and twenty-two, a move that we receive and place on file the twenty thirteen audit of the Waterloo Water Works.
Second.
Uh, very good. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you following along, if you have agendas, I'm not sure why there's not a twenty-one, but, uh, well, we just, we just don't have a twenty-one tonight. Those are roll call votes. Madam Clerk, please.
No, those are votes.
Oh, those are voice votes. We're gonna get on a roll and we're gonna screw it up right off the bat. All in favor, please say aye on twenty and twenty-two.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Twenty-three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
A move that we approve change order number one for the removal of the alleyway between three hundred West Third Street at three sixteen, three eighteen West Third Street for an amount not to exceed two thousand eight hundred dollars for demolition services in conjunction with FY two thousand and fourteen demolition contract with bit and sand and gravel for three hundred West Third Street. Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item point three? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Let's take twenty-four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number twenty-four, I'd like to make a motion approving change order number one for a net increase not to exceed negotiated price of seven thousand twenty dollars to add one thousand five Lafayette Street and five thirty-three Cottage Street for work performed by Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa in conjunction with asbestos containing material removal and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
Counsel, questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regular scheduled business tonight. We had a quick agenda tonight, so thank you all for, for coming and, and being with us through that. It's time for oral presentations and I'm going to make kind of a blanket statement tonight to get started with oral presentations. I am only assuming, but I think I'm assuming correctly, that many of you here might be here to speak on behalf of Mike Guile so that you understand our process perfectly, completely. The, the situation with Mike is a personnel matter that is very confidential because it is a personnel manager and we cannot speak to it or about it at all. We have our representation by our city attorney, Mr. Guile has representation by his attorney, and there will at some point be a hearing in front of the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission will make the determination on the outcome of Mr. Guile's case. This city council, nor I, have no input in that at all. There will not be a vote by the city council. I have no input on it at all. So as you, or if you choose to present your feelings to us, keep in mind that this body has no control over what happens from this point on out. Thank you very much. If you choose to have oral presentations, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes and I'll have the timer on tonight to help you out. So, there we go.
Jim Chapman, two two four Birch. Did I hear Sandy say tonight that a lot of the animals they pick up, they know where they belong and do we charge the people for taking their animals back to them?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yes, you heard them right, and yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lita Wester, five thirty-two Western Avenue.
Repeat your name, would you?
Lita Wester.
Thank you, Lita.
I'm one of the volunteers for Animal Control and there are two points not made in the meeting earlier. One, the kill rate of Cedar Bend is approximately sixty-eight percent and most of those were animals taken in by Animal Control. Every feral cat was put down. If cat did not have identification, it was gone. Cedar Bend kept, keeps its few token pit bulls and they're cute cuddly pets to adopt out and that is it. Second of all, us volunteers go to PetSmart every two weeks to adopt out pets through Cedar Valley Pet rescue, Agapi fosters, and Amy Hart Grey's rescue. We, I can't even give you the numbers. The first day we went out there, we adopted five dogs out alone. We also educate out there. We bring almerias pamphlets out there. We teach parents how to control their kids and how to teach them right to handle dogs and cats. We preach on the importance of spay and neuter, microchipping, and to leash and keep your pets under control at all times outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Lita, very much. I'd just like to ask, is it easier to teach the kids or the animals? Which is it?
Actually, it should be easier to teach the kids, but it's very questionable.
Thank you, Lita.
My name is Cheryl Peters Walter. I mean, I'm sorry, Cheryl Peters Rennlesberg, and some of you know that I've never been in favor of the city taking over from the Humane Society. I am still not in favor of that. I have called on two animals and nobody's ever called me back and I even, my husband and I were looking, and the neighbors were looking more for my cat than they were. I would call them and I would tell them where, where there was a sighting and they would not, they did not call me back. I turned in a sighting of a small miniature pitcher and I never got a call back on that dog. And I used to raise men pens. I'd also like to ask a question. Is it five hundred dollars each time you pick up a dog that's loose or a cat that's loose?
That would be a question for Sandy, Cheryl, and we can get that answered after the...
Okay, well, that's what is said in the paper.
Okay.
And I really disagree with that because my husband has a half husky, half Norwegian Elkhound and they like to run. And once in a while, she gets loose, okay? Cats get loose. They sneak out. And I think that's way too much money.
Okay.
One of my dogs was picked up by the Humane Society one time and I paid fifty dollars to get him back. So, um, I think the facilities are much better. I think the service is much better. I, I just am totally in support of the Humane Society. I give them money every month. We volunteer food to them. I've been approved as a foster care person. So I wouldn't do anything for the city. Not, not anything.
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl.
My name is Melinda Fitz. I live at seven twenty-seven West Third Street. I'm a volunteer at Animal Control. And I've, I disagree with what was just said. That's not the cost of when someone's dog is taken and picked up. If they come that night or they come that day, for one day, it was fifteen, but I think it did go up to thirty, twenty-five, thirty? Twenty-five. So that's not a true statement, okay? Number two, I am a foster of animal control dogs. Okay, the one dog that I have, if she was to go to the Cedar Bend Humane Society, she would have been killed on the spot because she has a bad leg. She was ran over. No one took care of it. And she has a bullet in her hip. She was put down at Animal Control, okay? She was given a chance to live because she can walk. She, she's not in pain. I gave her medicine. There's so many animals that if, that come into Animal Control, that if they would have went to the Humane Society, they would have been dead on the spot because either they were sick, they were malnutritioned. There's dogs that we have came in and have had broken legs. We've took them. Our volunteers put their own money also into Animal Control. We pay for gas, transport. No one hardly ever gives donations to Animal Control. So everybody says Cedar Bend, let's give all our money to Cedar Bend. Well, Animal Control saves animals, whether it's a cat, a dog, rabbits, bird, whatever, you know? So I don't, I disagree because we all chip in. We pay for our own laundry to get washed ourselves. So there's a lot of things that we do ourselves and we do fundraisers that we do ourselves to help keep the cause down for the city. So, yeah, that's a false statement that was said. So, you know, and a lot of people don't know about Animal Control, which I think is kind of sad because they think it's still all Cedar Bend. There's no animal control that's separate. So I try to educate people with that also. If your dog is loose, call Animal Control, you know? And I'll have to say.
Melinda, thank you. Thank you for your comments and for what you do.
My name is Jean Leedus. I live at nineteen oh one Baltimore Street, Waterloo. On behalf of the Preceptor Beta Lambda Sorority of the local chapter of the International Beta Sigma Phi Organization, we wish to support Mike Guile, formerly of the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Mike has arranged for our fall auction, which is an annual fundraiser of which proceeds go to student scholarships, the community organizations such as the Women's Alternative, Cedar Valley Hospice, and others. Mike has arranged and was very pleasant to work with. It was courteous to our members and those attending our fall auction. One of our purposes is to promote cultural development as prescribed by our governing body and to foster association in pursuit of liberal arts in a concerted manner. Mike has gone beyond the call of duty in preparing the room setup, the lighting, and all the needs that we specified in the contract at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. We highly recommend our organization of ten, we have some of our members here this evening. We highly recommend that the heads of the department, the Human Resource Department, reconsider and hire Mike back so that he can continue serving in the community in a responsible and professional manner as he has done in the past. We were so impressed with him in the past and all of his setups for us that some of our proceeds have gone back to the Waterloo Center for the Arts. Mike makes a difference in our community and at the Waterloo Center for the Arts and it's signed by all of our members.
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bud Eggleston. I think a lot of you probably remember me. I'm an old timer here, but anyway, I just want to speak in behalf of Mike. I appreciate the fact, Mayor, that you explained that you can't make these decisions. Him getting in his position had to be initiated someplace besides civil service, so I still would like to say what I'd like to say. I was thirty years the sports director for the city, thirty years in this building right over, excuse me, right over here. Mike was there eighteen of those years, I think, and I had nothing but good to say about this man. I think that there's any effort that you folks could put forth, it'd be well worth your time. This, uh, he has put so much into this and I think he needs to be defended by the people that get the benefit of him. This guy lives for this arts. He always has and always will. You'll never find an employee like him anywhere. And I'll, I'll go out and vouch for that, that you would never find an employee that goes the mile that Mike goes. In fact, when he's out here doing the parking lot business, helping people out, making sure they get out at night, I, I like to refer to him as probably the best bellhop anywhere in any hotel or anything. I mean, he, he's just that way. So I'd, I'd like to at least say, hopefully, I don't know what the problem was, but I don't think the problem could be so serious that he would be fired without a probation, without a suspension, without something. So anyway, I appreciate anything that you folks can do for him. He deserves it.
Bud, thank you for your comments and thank you for what you have done for the city for a long time.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
I'm Holden Krieger. I have great knees. I have to watch careful. I'm another sack. I live at four fourteen Sunset Road and I'm here in behalf of Mike Guile also. I have known Mike since he was a young kid. My office was located in this building for several years and for many, many years and for many, many events, Mike and I have collaborated on organizing the event, setting it up, always cheerful, always friendly. And your own statement of the city reads, "The city takes pride in its dedicated staff members who work hard every day to ensure optimum service delivery." Mike Guile did this for many, many years. I mean, thirty-four years officially, as it reads in the paper. And he has carried this building's image and professional services with huge pride, as if it was his own building, his own house, his own family. And I think he should be rewarded a little bit instead of fired. I'm very, very sad about that and I think it's a negative thing for the city to have happening. As you can see, many people have used his services and have appreciated all his kindness. And also, another thing that's missing here desperately are the flowers, all the beautiful plants and all the caring he did inside and outside for always cheerful blossoms blooming all year round. So please tell the powers at hand to reconsider all this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Renata.
My name is Barb Dunneke and I live at nineteen thirty-six Caris Road and I'm here in support of Mike Guile as well. I've known Mike for probably twenty-six years at least, having first started with my daughter when she was in the community theater and just throughout the years with the community theater and just different aspirations of being here. And most recently, he helped us have this very successful fundraiser for Artist's Puzz for a Cause, which is a fundraiser for Black Hawk Wildlife Rehab Project and Waverly Pet Rescue. And just his ability to just help, come together and help people, whether it's animals or people. I, you know, watched him work and throughout the years and particularly the beautification of the building and around the grounds. And I don't think that people realize that most of those were Mike's. And I think once the people realize too, you know, that a lot of this beautification that was around here, which really made this kind of a pillar of the community as far as beauty goes, that will no longer be here because Mike's not here. And he's just been a pillar of the community, I think, for this particular facility. And I know, like you said, you can't really do anything, but if there's anybody else, you know, that could get out and support him as well, I think he's been a dedicated person to the whole city of Waterloo. And he's been here from, you know, the beginning when he was back in the sports department, you know, and, and doing all kinds of things and then with the new River Plaza area and stuff. So I think it's a real loss to the city that Mike is no longer, you know, involved with the city. And I think it's a real shame and hopefully they'll reconsider.
Thank you, Bud.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Jones, fifty sixty-seven Falk Road. Just a question, maybe you can answer, maybe you can't. If, if our voices really aren't being, going anywhere with the council here on Mike Guile, where do we put them? Where, where do we send letters? Where do we send comments?
It will eventually be heard by the Civil Service Commission and that's all I can tell you. The Civil Service Commission will make the determination.
So there's, is there a way to send letters to them?
Uh, we have been taking letters of support and we have been taking letters at the city clerk's office. So those will be on file at the city clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, is there a point of clarification? The civil service meeting, is that a public meeting that people can attend?
It's at the request of the attorneys, I believe, but I'll let you answer.
Jim Walsh, city attorney. The, the civil service meeting is to determine whether he was lawfully terminated. It's not a popularity contest. They're going to decide whether or not the city followed proper procedures to discuss him and if they did, he'll be dismissed. It's not an election, just so everybody understands what's happening.
Is it a public meeting, Jim?
It's a public meeting, but they won't take input from people who are there to say, "I like Mike."
Okay.
Or people who say, "I don't like Mike." It's there to determine whether he was legally terminated.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, a quick question.
Yes, Dr. Deming.
Yeah, yeah, Bud.
You just have to come to the mic.
Uh, I'm sorry.
For as long as it's three minutes.
Yeah. Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken already?
Josh Wilson, twenty-eight thirty-one Saratoga Drive. I'm disappointed with the work session that happened today and I'd like to share a quote with you. "It is not the function of our government to keep the citizen from falling into error. It is the function of the citizen to keep the government from falling into error." And that's a quote from Robert Jackson, a former Supreme Court Justice of the United States. I'm offended and I'm hurt to see that we have so many great taxpaying citizens in attendance tonight. We have high school students here observing their local government and that we are making accusations that people in this city in two thousand and fourteen are still practicing McCarthyism. Government oversight is a huge thing. It's going on across the state, across this country. It happens and it needs to happen. Councilwoman Cole, you referenced emails that you have that go along with your McCarthyism theory. I've read emails that you have sent.
You have. You're one of them.
I have, yes. Or you've referred to...
Do you want to go through my curse, too?
I have three minutes to speak. Do I not?
You do.
Thank you. I have, I read emails where you have referred to other council members as a-holes at large. I have read emails where you have asked the mayor, if meetings were going to be open to the public, where responses were stated, "Well, we let the newspaper know late, so hopefully they won't show up." I have read, I have heard from citizens that, speaking of McCarthyism, which was scare tactics, your own husband has approached members of this audience and threatened them for an opening record request that you, that is their right. I want to say that the citizens, also I should mention a colleague of mine, a good friend of mine, State Representative Don Pettengill, also filed an open records request against this city. So it's not just the citizens. I don't want us to feel like it's just us. Even our state lawmakers have trouble with open record requests, but I'm, I'm disappointed. I know other members in this audience are offended. There's no secret that members of this council don't like each other. And I wish you guys would just grow up and admit it and get to work with our tax money in a respectable way and quit trying to just fight, you know? You, you were referencing a member of the council. Why don't you just say his name? Why do you have to hide behind not referencing what you're referencing? So my three minutes are up, but I think you should be ashamed of yourself. It's two thousand and fourteen and I'm positive McCarthyism isn't in existence.
Mr. Wilson?
Bill Kemyer, five twenty-six Old Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. Seventy-five years lived in this town. I would like to know what you meant and if you was insinuating that I'm practicing McCarthyism.
Bill, we're not here to answer questions.
I am. That's a direct, that's a direct insult to me and I have the right to challenge that here.
Okay.
Because you should have stopped it and you didn't. Now, it's my right. I'm asking if she's calling me a McCarthyism. I'm an American.
I'm an American. I've served in the military. I've served in the United States Marine Corps. I believe in government. I believe in open, honest, fair government, transparent. And when you call me and are insinuating to me that I'm practicing McCarthyism, you've got my attention. I have the right to do everything that I've done. I follow every one of your rules, every one of them. What I've liked, married, loved, I still have a right, I'm going to speak to you and speak my opinion, and I give up. And I ask for my apology because it is insinuating to me that I'm a McCarthyism. I take offense to that, and I want an apology.
I wasn't talking about you.
Well, what did you say if you were talking about me anymore? You were saying I'm practicing and that kind of stuff. That's what your email said also.
You read my email, too.
I really talked, and that's what I would say. You probably need to call another one with your email.
Forrest Diliboo, 1725 Huntington Road. I too have seen some things tonight and other nights that I am disapproved of, and that is the political statements. One of the council members stated that, at one meeting, that he would be in favor of cutting the two at-large councilmen. To me, that's a political statement because they belong to a different party than that person, that council member. I'm not going to use any names if I can help them. I'd very well hard not to. The two councilmen-at-large go to lots of meetings. They talk with lots of people, and they bring back lots of questions. Lots of people will call them with questions because they will field their questions and answer their questions. They're not turned down. Some of the other council members are a little too busy, for whatever reason, and maybe they don't get back to, or they don't get back too timely. And I, I think it's bad when you personally, I believe, attack a councilperson. Leave your elephants and your asses in the parking lot, and don't bring them in here. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Bud, generally, the rules don't allow for something, but I'll let you, be very brief, please.
I just want to respond some-
Okay, be very quick, if you would, please.
Yeah, when you said that you have nothing to do with the reinstatement of Mike that's in the Civil Service.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a question, that if they say, come back and say that he is fired, do you have any recourse or anything to say about it, or is that?
Both parties, both parties will have the opportunity to appeal.
Okay, that's right.
Thanks.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. The animal control has just become such an emotional issue. I just want to back the emotion out of it and just look at it from a business standpoint. We're just asking some simple questions. The van is given to them. We say, "What's the cost of the van?" And we're told during the work session, "Well, there's no value to the van." Well, the van's going to have to be replaced. We gave them a building, a very, a highly sellable building, probably the best building of all the buildings that we, that we are supposed to shutter. We gave them a building. It's not reflective, that the cost of that building, the cost of that asset is not reflective in their budget from anything I saw. We were told during the budget sessions that, that Ms. Teller works 40 hours a week for code enforcement, and she's paid for code enforcement, and there's a bunch of other hours, and we've never really been told how they're compensating. If she's, if it's a volunteer, that's really an awesome idea, but if there's an injury, is there a workers' comp situation? We have, even if the cost was the same from a cash standpoint, I guess I'm a proponent of not breaking into jail. Why have employees where the risk could be, especially with dogs, vicious dogs? Why run the risk of a workers' comp claim, a disability claim? If we can shed that liability with a payment, we should always be looking to do that. There are assets that are being given and not accounted for. If we have vans we don't need, I think the citizens would say, "Let's sell them." We, there's auctions. Vans go for sale. Let's buy them, let's get rid of them. I'm saying we're asking very simple business questions, and all of a sudden, it's an emotional issue. I don't know if it's personalities, the fact that they're animals. I thought the McCarthyism was one of the lowest points of the time I've come down here. I don't understand. I'm saying let's back out the emotion and make a business decision. From a business decision, I don't understand the risk. I've asked questions about, are volunteers covered under any sort of insurance if they get injured or mauled during their volunteer work? Did the volunteers sign an agreement? Have they, have they given us, excuse us for liability? I'm still waiting for answers for those very simple, unemotional business questions. And I thought the work session could have gotten around to that as well. The work session was a nice, paid infomercial with no opportunity for any real meat or any questions. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We're in here at 111 Highland. Excuse me. Emotional issue, I think we can talk about that as terms of the animal control. I think you can also see there's a lot of citizens who are not happy. I realize the city's getting tired of this, and I realize you would like to get it to move ahead. So are the citizens. I don't owe anybody who doesn't want to see a resolution to this kind of thing. That's probably, and I'll just mention one area, that's been suggested since before the city voted to take over animal control, that you folks do something like go out to the Humane Society and actually look at what they do. What's been said here tonight about the Humane Society, I will tell you, is not true, and it is not talking about the new building out there. It's talking about the input pound. That's what's being talked about. The thing about killing all these dogs is not true out there at the Humane Society. I can tell you from 15 years of experience with that and the records that come out, it is not true. The citizens who have stood up and asked these questions have been talked about in ways that I would never allow my kids to talk, and I have to say, the city council has sort of aggravated this by saying, "We've got to move along. We've got to move along." Nobody's trying to hurt the operation if it's the right thing to do, but the citizens seem to be held out of it. For all the meetings we talk about having, I still do not remember a single meeting where citizens could come and sit down and talk without time limits and take a specific issue about this thing and talk about it. That's how you have an open meeting. It is not the work session. The work session, as you said, this is a commercial. It's not, it's not a work session about how to resolve something. If I was back in business and holding meetings and management like that, those management people would be running out of the room to talk like that. You have to sit down to resolve the issues, and I still suggest that you have not been out to the Humane Society, take just one hour, just a single hour, and go out there. They'll be happy to give you a tour out there, even though apparently the members do not want to go out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second? Hold on further?
Aye.
Close. We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.